Introductions.
Mr. Chairman, members and guests, please welcome Pastor Victor Hardy from the Congregational Church of the Valley that's located in Chandler. He'll lead us in prayer in the Pledge of Allegiance today. And I just want to mention that Victor is truly a stalwart in our community. He's involved in the entire community, not just serving members of his congregation. And I'm particularly proud to call Victor my friend. So Victor, welcome.
Thank you, sir. You all please stand. Let us prepare our hearts and minds for prayer. Father, help your children. And don't let them fall by the side of the road. And teach them to love one another. So heaven might find them a place in their hearts. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this gathering as we come unto you. We lift up our voices and we lift up our praise to you. We thank you, dear Father, for all that you are doing right now. Dear Father, we ask you to bless this meeting, bless our leadership, and bless each and every person here. Let the voices ring out, the freedoms and the things that need to be done, but also, dear Father, let our leadership be able to listen and understand and move forward. Dear Father, we thank you as we lift up our voices in praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Now let us say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, thank you Pastor Hardy. And did I mention that he has a great voice?
Yes, thank you very much Supervisor Sellers for inviting Pastor Hardy. And I was going to mention, he did have a, he does have a beautiful voice, but sorry to disappoint you, but I won't be singing at all during today's meeting. So I'm sure that that will be of benefit to all in attendance. With that, now we will turn to our clerk. Madam Clerk, please call the roll of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Supervisor Hickman?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Here.
And I understand Supervisor Chukri will be joining us by phone. And Chairman Gates?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I do understand we have several people here to talk on the issue of elections. Just to make sure everyone understands, that's not on the agenda today, but you are certainly more than welcome to provide your thoughts on this topic at the end of the meeting during public comment. Now, at this point, we're going to have one of my favorite parts of the meeting, and that is our pet showcase. So Jose Santiago is joining us today from Maricopa County Animal Care and Control, and he's brought a friend with him today. Good morning, Jose.
Good morning. This little guy right here is Jackson. He has been up for adoption for a couple of days now, which we're a little surprised to see that he's still at the shelter because he's a cute little one. He's a very exotic breed known as a chowini, so a chihuahua dot town mix of some sort. And you can see that he's the typical little lapdog kind of dog. If he does not get adopted beforehand, he will be going on one of our transport services this week. We've done close to 1,000, I believe, transports this year alone. So we're really proud of that system that we have in place. And we also want to take an opportunity to recognize and thank the Love Pup Organization. They are going to continue their microchip program, so every adoptable pet in the shelter, all the adoptable dogs, get a microchip upon adoption, thanks to Love Pup. And they are offering up a free microchip clinic this weekend. So we're thankful for their work and their services. And this is Jackson.
Wonderful. Well, thanks for joining us, Jose. And again, thanks for all the great work that everyone does over at Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. Next, we'll move on to item five, which is a presentation on the 2019 Maricopa County Stormwater Pollution Prevention Poster Contest. And Brian Keogh is with us today. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In an effort to educate the public and promote community involvement regarding stormwater pollution education and prevention, the Maricopa County Environmental Services Department continues, in the 10th year of this tradition, holding a poster contest for students in grades three through six. I would like to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board, for your support in making this opportunity available for children of Maricopa County to learn about stormwater pollution prevention and express their knowledge through art. I would also like to thank members of the community who sponsored this program, including Phoenix Children's Museum, Phoenix Herpetological Society, Liberty Wildlife, Arizona State Parks, Desert Botanical, The Phoenix Suns, Maricopa County Flood Control, Maricopa County Parks and Rec, and Maricopa Library District. Finally, I'd like to thank the parents, teachers, and children for participating in this great activity. Educational presentations have been provided throughout the year on stormwater pollution prevention, and students were challenged to submit posters supporting the message, "From Streets to Streams, Let's Keep It Clean." Prizes were awarded for first, second, and third place for third and fourth graders and fifth and sixth graders. A total of 211 entries were submitted, reviewed, and judged by the stormwater staff. At this time, Mr. Chairman and board members, I'd like to bring up our outreach coordinator, Rachel Sugar, who, by the way, has done a fantastic job in getting this program to where we are right now, today. And she'd like to come up and do the presentations and announce the winners.
Wonderful.
Okay, so I'm going to start with our third and fourth grade winners first. So our first place winner for third and fourth grade was Luisa Prieto, and her picture is up on the board. So come on up, Luisa. And we have a certificate here for her for winning. And so her picture is going to be featured on our September page of the calendar. And then our second place winner. Yeah, you can take some pictures with the board, one by one. Okay, and then our second place winner for third and fourth grade. And our second place winner for third and fourth grade is Tyler Niemela.
He's from District Three, by the way.
All right, and then you can come over here, Tyler. And then our third place winner for third and fourth grade was Will New York. Did I say that right? I hope I did. And we'll also give them some framed photos of their posters, so he can have this on his wall forever. Yeah, hey, Will, come back over here. So let's get all of the third and fourth grades up here, and we can get our pictures. One more time, yeah. All right, one last round for our third and fourth graders. They all did great. If you guys want to come wait back over here, we're going to get one more photo with you guys at the end. All right, and then next up is our fifth and sixth grade winners. Yep, right over here again. So our first place winner for fifth and sixth grade was Hayden Vanderhar. Good job, Hayden. And our second place winner for fifth and sixth grade could not be here this morning, but, oh, did she come here? All right, so our second place winner is here, which is Vivian Merrill. So come on up, Vivian. All right, good job, Vivian. And then our final winner for fifth and sixth grade is Lily Taylor. All right, and then can I get all my fifth and sixth graders back in here? All right, and then my third and fourth graders back in for all of you. All right, and one last applause for all our winners. They all did great. All right, and all my kids and families, if you'd like, we're going to go outside, take some more photos with just our winners, and pass out our prizes for you guys.
We have a lot of talented young people in our county, and appreciate everybody for their involvement and everybody who organized that. What a great, what a great program and getting a great message out there. Next, we're going to move on to the Tom Manos Outstanding Service Award. So this is an award that was started a few years ago in recognition of our former county manager, Tom Manos, and his great service to Maricopa County over the years. But you know, we've got about 13,000 employees in Maricopa County who do incredible work for us every day, for all of us. Enjoy Rich, of course, is our county manager, is an outstanding leader to those folks and really inspires these people. But every year, we like to do the Tom Manos Award to recognize those who really went above and beyond and have done magnificent things in this county, serving as our employees. And it was a very tough competition again this year, many great applicants. Unfortunately, we only have one. Is that Supervisor Chukri?
It is.
Thank you for joining us. We're just getting into the Tom Manos Outstanding Service Award.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And so with that, I'm very proud to announce that this year's winner of the Tom Manos Outstanding Service Award is Michelle Castañeda Martinez. Congratulations. Now, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit while you stand there.
Should have brought my Kleenex.
Now, people often interact with Maricopa County government at times of urgent need. And at Public Health Office of Vital Registration, those needs are literally life and death. As a program manager for 16 years, Michelle Castañeda Martinez has innovated in an area where it would be easy to just carry on with business as usual. She's taken a job that's all about getting an important piece of paper to a customer and figured out ways to use technology to make it more convenient for the person on the other end. There are numbers that speak to Michelle's success, a 40% decrease in customer lobby wait times and a 33% improvement in application processing time among them. But listening to her colleagues, there are other things that they find more impressive, like the time that she worked personally with a family grieving the loss of a child and helped them navigate the special permitting required so they could have the burial they wanted on their property. Or the way that she recognized the potential for growth in her own customer service and taught herself to speak fluent Spanish to better connect with the sometimes underserved community. Or the employee satisfaction committee she established, a first in Maricopa County that recognizes staff successes, marks milestone achievements, and encourages employees to think and act as a team inside and outside of work. Or the way that she balances her work for Maricopa County with her role as a mother, wife, family member, and friend. 120 funeral homes, 30 birthing hospitals, and countless other community partners and individuals rely on Michelle and her team. She's described as the recognized vital records expert in Arizona, and her work is an example of what can happen when we put ideas into action and truly put customers first. At times of great need, in situations of life and death, Michelle has created an environment and mentored a staff that delivers for the public. That's why we're proud to recognize Michelle Castañeda Martinez as our recipient of the 2019 Tom Manos Outstanding Service Award.
I'd just like to say, Supervisors, Manager Rich, Clerk of the Board, how honored and humbled I am. And it's a word enough to have been nominated by my wonderful team and who make doing what I do easy and have been there through every challenge, every barrier, and overcome. And, you know, I always tell them and thank them and am amazed at how resilient they are and how willing they are to lean in, and that's what we do. And so it's a word enough to have been nominated by them. And second, it's a word enough to have been considered by amongst such esteemed and qualified colleagues throughout this county, because I know we've got some Mexican people. And it's also a word enough to be able to get up every day and serve this great community and because that's what it's all about, being a public servant and being available and helping people through both the best times in their lives and some of the worst. And so it's a gift. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again, Michelle. Such an inspiring story. All right, next, we're going to move to Planning and Zoning, our consent agenda. And if we could have Jen Pacorsky and Darren Gerard, please join us from Planning and Zoning. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one speaker slip. I believe it's Gary Carteno, and he wishes to speak in favor of this item.
And which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, item number one, PG one.
Okay, wonderful. Do you, sir, would you like to, would you like to come down and speak? All right. All right, with that, do we have any, any presentation at all on any of these items or any questions from my colleagues?
Chairman, members of the board, we do have one small correction, and that is on item PG six, number, condition, stipulation number C. It says the following R16 RUP standards apply, should be R13 standards apply. But the actual action is correct. It was just in the narrative, there was a small typo.
All right, excellent. Any questions at all from my colleagues? If not, I would entertain, entertain a motion for items PG one through PG six.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion to approve, make a motion to approve items PG one through PG six with the notation previously made on item PG six. For the changes?
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisors Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next, we have, under Clerk of the Board, we have liquor license applications. We have seven A, which is a new license for the glossy heifer. B through D, special event license for Central Art Alliance, DBA Phoenix Center for the Arts. And E is a permanent extension of the premises patio for WCN El Encanto Dos LLC, DBA El Encanto Dos Mexican Restaurant. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on these items?
None for those items, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the board will now consider items seven A through seven E.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to, under County Officers, Constables eight is a donation from ESS Eye Protection. Under the County Attorney, we have number nine is official appointments and oaths of office. Under the Sheriff, we have 10, amend agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. 11 is a technical correction to one-time addition to fleet. 12 is one-time addition to fleet. And 13 is supplemental benefits extension. The board will now consider items eight through 13.
Mr. Chairman? Move for approval of items eight through 13?
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to another sheriff's item, which is the transfer of the sonar system. The board will now consider item 14.
Move to approve item number 14, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Now, this item requires a unanimous roll call vote, so Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers?
Aye.
Supervisor Chukri?
Aye.
Supervisor Hickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
And Chairman Gates?
Aye. So that motion passes unanimously. Next, under the School Superintendent, we have number 15, which is an IGA with the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family. The board will now consider item 15.
Move to approve item number 15, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to, under the Treasurer, item 16, which is offers on tax-deeded land. This is a parcel near Seventh Avenue and Camelback Road. Madam Chair, at this time, has anyone else informed you of offers on this particular item?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any additional bids on these, on this property. Mr. Tom Hester is here. He is the bidder for the Wave Investment, and if there are any questions, he's happy to answer them.
All right, any questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the higher of the two bids, offer number two, on the amount of $220.
All right, thank you for that motion, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion to accept offer number two, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under the Treasurer, we have number 17, which is offers on tax-deeded land, parcel near 16th Street and Southern Avenue. Again, we have a couple of offers in the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional offers on item 17?
Mr. Chairman, I have no offers on that item.
All right, then, we would entertain a motion on item 17.
So moved. Offer number two. Yep. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item number 17 and move that we accept offer number two.
All right, thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion to accept offer number two on item 17, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under Adult Probation, we have the exemption from markings and issuance of non-governmental license plates. And then, under the Assistant County Manager, 19, we have agreement with AT Still University. The board will now consider items 18 and 19.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under Correctional Health, we have items 20 and 21. These are donations from Jansen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Otsaka America Farm, Inc. 22 through 24 are MOUs with Care First, Maricopa County Special Healthcare District, and Stewart Health Choice Arizona. Under Enterprise Technology, number 25 is an MOU with the Transportation Security Administration. The board will now consider items 20 through 25.
Move to approve items 20 through 25, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Next, under Finance, we have 26, funds, transfers, and warrants. Under Human Resources, 27 is market ranges. Under Human Services, we have 28, amend agreement with the Arizona Community Association. 29, application to U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. 30, agreement with Auburn University. 31 is an in-kind donation from Learning Genie, Inc. And under the Medical Examiner, number 32 is grant funds from the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. The board will now consider items 26 through 32.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of items 26 through 32.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll give that one to Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you.
You got it. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under Procurement Services, 33 is an auto body repair contract. 34, detention security electronic systems contract. Under Public Health, we have 35, which is acceptance and use of donated HIV medications. 36 is amend IGA with the Arizona Department of Health Services. 37 is termination of Safe Kids Worldwide Coalition Agreement. And 38 is an administrative correction to agreement with Dignity Community Care. Now, we do have a speaker to speak here in opposition to Agenda Item 33. So, this is Raymond Mobilia. I may have mispronounced that. Please come join us.
Mobilia.
Mobilia, my apologies.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Chairman and the Board. I am Ray Mobilia. I'm the owner of Ace Auto Collision and Paint Services. I've had the county contract for body repair for the last five years. And unfortunately, when they had the pre-bid meeting, I wasn't able to get there in time. I got there late. And I went ahead and submitted my bid anyway, and I got a letter from them saying they were going to pull me out of the bid. If you look at the bids that were allowed, which I'm on air, but I was not allowed, there's quite a bit of savings compared to the other two. The thing that I'm thinking is, is that out of 80 body shops that are iCar Gold certified that are qualified to do this repair in the county, only two that they allowed to bid. And I felt that they didn't get enough response. And I'm asking that you ask procurement to go back out the bid to get more response on this bid. It would save the taxpayers a lot of money. The pricing that you got on the bids that they allowed is way high.
All right, thank you for coming down today and joining us. Any questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, Supervisor Hickman.
Is anybody from procurement here today?
Yeah, can you please come join us? Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
My question really quickly, because this, usually, bid sync and... But there's a lot of people that are not familiar with the bid sync and the protocols that go with it. Can you kind of step me through this a little bit? Because I know that I've tried to entice more and more vendors, especially local vendors, to come through the bid sync process and to bid on items that the county can do. We're all county taxpayers. But we also need to stay within the process that's here. So if you could kind of talk us through a little bit of that, and why we're here today on something like this.
We currently use the e-application tool, which is bidsync.com. And it's a tool that we submit all our... Thank you. It's a tool that we submit all our bids through, and we also invite vendors to submit through bid sync as well. So it's an online application that generates thousands of invitations to vendors. So they have an opportunity to be able to respond to an open bid that's usually open for approximately 14 days. So there is ample opportunity, and there's actually a large pool of vendors that we actually reach out to through this e-platform, through bid sync.
So, the question was asked, and take me through this just a second.
Yes, sir.
Because this is just hitting us right now. What makes it, or what makes it difficult, just by him being late? Or was there a wide time to apply for something like this, and it just got down to the nitty-gritty, and it was missed?
So vendors are given the oppor... Well, actually, the requirements on the solicitation, there's various requirements on different solicitations, and in this particular solicitation, they were required to attend a mandatory pre-bid conference, where they generally go over specs or technical requirements that are on the bids themselves. And it also provides them an opportunity to be able to answer questions, or provide questions to the technical end-users. So they are required, underneath this particular solicitation, they were required to attend a mandatory pre-bid. I think, does that answer your question?
Is it a one-time, is it a one-time-only option? Hey, if you want to...
So essentially, if they don't meet that requirement, essentially, they have, in a sense, we can't accept their bid, because it's also part of the actual bid requirement itself. So other vendors that have attended would be allowed to actually submit a solicitation, or a response to our solicitation.
Okay. Right. Supervisor Hickman, thanks for your questions there. As he mentioned, we're just hearing about this for the first time here, and if we were to... If one of my colleagues here were to make a motion to continue, to learn a little bit more about this situation, move until our next meeting, would that create any major issues on this particular item?
I don't believe it would create any major issues, but it's something we can actually revisit as well, so...
Okay. I think that might make some sense, again. I didn't hear about anything about this before. Thank you, sir, for coming down. Yeah, if you'd like to say... I think you had about 30 more seconds on the clock, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, I just wanted to say that that was the reason why I was pulled out of the bid, was because I was, I had issues that morning, and I got there, but it was too late. And I talked to the procurement manager of the bid, and she told me, she said, "No, I can't accept your bid." And I said, "Well, it's not that I don't know what we're doing. I've done this contract for five years." And, but I always said to her, I said, "I think you need to get more shops involved in this, because there's 80 iCar Gold certified shops that are qualified, and you're only getting two bids? I don't think that's a good enough response." And years ago, they kicked it out because not enough response. So, and I even offered to give her a list of all the shops that she can send letters out to. So, that's all I have to say.
I have another question.
Supervisor Hickman.
Kind of familiar with business and bids and contracts. Okay, so we've got this, and we are a public entity. And we've gone through the bid sync, and there are bids in front of us now with monetary values. And I do not want to offer up these two companies placed, you know, their names along with a contract price that they could do county business for. And I don't want to put them at an unfair now disadvantage, because is... Joy, you might want to carry me through this one, too. I don't want to create an issue. I think it's valid that we try to get out to as many businesses as we can. This is the county taxpayer dollar. But I also don't want to treat people that complied with the processes unfairly either.
Understand.
Especially when now we have prices. I'm kind of listening to this and making a point, because you have been, what sounds to me, a longtime vendor to the county, and I appreciate that. You did participate in the service, at least, of bid sync before.
Yes.
And I know businesses, I'm just surmising, you get a little bit busy on the day-to-day, and you miss a meeting, because you have 14 other meetings to... I'm just surmising. Or you could have taken a long lunch. I don't know. But I also don't want to create, by asking for a continuance, an unfair resetting of a bid, especially with the two people that complied correctly. You know, so, take me, Joy, or take me through that, too.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, if there is a continuance, I think it'll give us a chance to look at this with an eye towards fairness. Shelby and I have previously discussed concerns about these mandatory pre-bid conferences.
Okay.
So, we will keep an eye to fairness to the people that have participated and bid in accordance with the specs, but this is an item that we've discussed in the past, so I would like two weeks to take a look at this matter. But we will be very cognizant of the fact that we have two bidders that have, you know, essentially exposed their bid, or others who have exposed their bids, and we'll do it with an eye towards fairness, but also improvement for the process in the future.
So maybe, should I make a continuance, but with not a date certain, so you can have enough time to take a look at this?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead and continue it to the next regular meeting, and then if we need another continuance, we'll ask for it, but we'd like to keep it moving, but, like I said, with an eye towards fairness.
Okay, then, do you have a date?
Oh, I think Supervisor Chukri had a comment?
I applaud Mr. Hickman. I think he is trying to thread a needle here that's very difficult. And as a county, we are trying to act at the speed of business. We're trying to be that nimble agile government that reflects the private sector, and I think we've done that very, very well. This is a difficult balance, per what Mr. Hickman just stated, in trying to make sure we're not penalizing someone who was able to participate in the process. And we have to have these procurement processes outlined in a specific way in order to have fairness and balance, which I think we've done here. But given the fact that this is a very, very nuanced and unique situation, I think it is wise to continue, and I would support Mr. Hickman in that mindset.
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem or hesitation in terms of holding back and having a better look at our process as a whole, and how we move forward as a county when it comes to these types of contracts. But the end of the day, you know, we had a process, and these are the rules, and everyone knew the rules. And I'm not familiar with the rules neither, by the way. I mean, we leave it up to our professionals to go through the bidding process. This is a $1.6 million contract. This is a big contract. And I would hope that those that were looking at bidding for this knew how large of a contract this was, and to make sure that they had all their ducks in a row, and everything was done correctly as our rules were set. So I have no problem looking at it as a whole, but the end of the day, kind of going back to what Clint had indicated, there was a process, and we have a couple of companies, I'm not familiar with these companies as well, that have bid, they have submitted, they have abided by the process, and that's what's in front of us. And, but anyways, I have no problem looking as we move forward.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, we very well may wind up in the exact same place that we are right now, but I do feel like we owe you an explanation of the process, and that we're being as inclusive as possible to make sure we're bringing you value each time we do one of these.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions on item 33?
Well, with everything, and thank you for my colleague's suggestions, too, and thank you for being here and bringing it to our attention. I would move to continue this item to our next formal meeting, which is currently May 22nd, and so we can take a little bit of a further look, make sure that it was a fair process.
Okay, and this is just with regard to item 33, right?
This is just item number 33, yes.
Excellent. Have a motion from Supervisor Hickman, and did I hear a second from Supervisor Chukri?
Correct, thank you, Mr. ...
Excellent, all right. So we have a motion to continue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now, I would entertain a motion with respect to items 34 through 38.
I make a motion to approve items 34 through 38, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to Transportation. 39 through 40 is a Salt River Project Distribution Easements. 41 is amend the IGA with Arizona State University. 42 is easement right-of-way and relocation assistance documents. Under the Board of Supervisors, 43 through 45, we have appointments and reappointments to the Board of Health, Self-Inured Benefits Trust Fund, and the Citizens Audit Advisory Committee. And under the Industrial Development Authority, number 46, we have a resolution for issuance of bonds for Banner Health. The Board will now consider items 39 through 46.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items number 39 through 46.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under Setting of Hearings, Clerk of the Board, 47, is submitted petitions to form the Country Club Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. And under Planning and Development, we have 48, which is planning and zoning cases. The Board will now consider items 47 and 48.
Move to approve items 47 and 48, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to the Consent Agenda. 49 is Civil Penalty Appeals. 50 and 51, Property Reclassification Appeal Cases for Denial and Approval. 52 is a Boundary Change to the Hyder Valley Irrigation Water Delivery District. 53 is Donations. 54 and 55, Duplicate and Stale Dated Warrants. 56, Tax Abatements. And 57, Treasurers' Collections and Investment Summary. The Board will now consider items 49 through 57.
Motion to approve items 49 through 57, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Continuing on the Consent Agenda, 58 is Administrative Correction to New License for Pilot Travel Center, number 1180. 59 is Check and Enforcement Fund Quarterly Report. 60 is amend check enforcement program, first quarter financial reports. 61, precinct committeement. 62, settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. The Board will now consider items 58 through 62.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 58 through 62.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Also, under the Consent Agenda, we have 63, and at this point, we're going to...
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Hickman, step out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a conflict on one of these items.
Thank you very much. All right, now that Supervisor Hickman has stepped out, this is item 63. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I'm going to give that one to Supervisor Chukri. I think he actually said it first, there was just the, you know, the speed of sound there, so. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously, and now we can welcome Supervisor Hickman back in the room. I can't tell you about the contents of the debate, but it's very wild and...
Wild, boy.
But a strong, yeah.
In three seconds?
Strongly held views on that one. All right, under the addendum on Transportation, we have A1, which is the Settlement of Maricopa County versus Johnny Garretson et al., Planning and Development. A2, Settlement of Maricopa County versus Phillips. And under the County Attorney, we have A3, which is Payment Regarding Attorney's Fees in the Matter of Melendrez versus Penzone. The Board will now consider addendum items A1 through A3.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items A1, A2, and A3.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of these items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we will recess as the Board of Supervisors, and will convene as the Flood Control District. We have one item under Flood Control District today, F1, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. The Board will now consider item F1.
Move to approve item F1, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of item F1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll adjourn as the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, and we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. And this is now the time set for public comment. And we do have several folks here to speak on various items today. First, we have Timothy Horn to speak in favor. And again, this is public comment. Just to go over the ground rules briefly, all the speakers will have two minutes to speak during public comment. And the Board of Supervisors, under state law, we're not allowed to respond to the comments that you make today, but we may direct the county manager to look at certain items. But again, we're not able to respond today. So with that, Mr. Horn, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tim Horn. I am an ordinary citizen of Maricopa County. Lived here about 14 years. Hailed from Ohio. I know some of you and others I don't. But I know of your work, and I've watched it here today. And I've been involved in politics as well as county government back in Ohio. I appreciate your work. Right now, there's an item out there that many in this room have heard about and know about, and it's about sound elections for Maricopa County. So I'm here to speak on behalf of just ordinary people. I know that you belong in parties as well, and I've been involved in party politics, and I still am. But I'm not here as a partisan today. As an ordinary citizen, what we have to do, and you are our representatives, when you leave this room, you're ordinary citizens too. But when you convene here, you're representing millions of us. And so I come to you to plead today that when you look at elections in Arizona, there's a loss of confidence that's occurred in the last couple of years. Some people blame it on a different county recorder. Some people blame it on a past county recorder. But whatever the reasons are, what happens is this room has to decide where we're going to go and how we get the trust back for the people of Arizona. Because Arizona, the power is in this county. And the results in this county in the next election are going to have a big, big result that comes out in a national election. It could be pivotal. I don't know what it's going to be. But I do know that we, ordinary people, deserve a fair election that we can have confidence in. So we can talk about fairness. That's an issue that people can weigh. But what we need to do is trust. And I ask you to consider that when you're making your considerations for taking back elections from the county recorder and the administration thereof. I think my time's up or almost. So thank you very much for listening to me. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Next, we have Jim O'Connor. Mr. O'Connor, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Maricopa County Supervisors. I continue to applaud the great and nonpartisan work that you all execute. I've been down here more than a dozen times in the last couple of years, and you do it well. You execute beautifully with deference to one another. I speak behind my friend, Tim Horn, who just echoed comments regarding a lack of confidence in the Maricopa County election executions. After listening to today, I would like to put, without regard to political party, because I have no idea of her political party, but an exemplary employee of the county, Michelle Martinez, in nomination for Maricopa County Recorder. That's the kind of an employee we need, whether elected or appointed, who is serving the interest of all of the people all of the time, appropriately motivated. Gentlemen, this falls to you as supervisors. The decision to put tighter and more appropriate reins on our current recorder, Adrian Fontes, is absolutely imperative. My observations in everything that I've read in public about that recorder, our county recorder, is that he is a rabid partisan in the execution of his duties. I have no personal animus toward the man whatsoever. He served in the United States Marine Corps, and for that, I applaud him. However, in this role as county recorder, he is serving Democrat Party interests over the interests of the citizens, all of the citizens of Maricopa County. And it is your duty, all five of you, to exercise the controls that you do have, and I pray for the courage for you to exercise that well. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Next is Kathleen Angelos. Thank you for joining us today.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I am a retired Air Force. I started Air Force, and I'm a retired Navy Petty Officer. And I have been stationed at Luke Air Force Base in the 70s. And I am here as a concerned veteran regarding elections. Because a lot of what veterans do, they mail in their ballots. They have early voting because of the location of where they are. And my concern is, now that I'm retired, I can go to a polling place. But what I have read and researched and looked at, the handling of these mailing ballots were housed someplace. I don't even know that my ballot got counted, and I mailed mine in on this last 2016 election. And I would like very much to feel secure in knowing that this next election, all the ballots will be counted in a timely fashion, and there are no surprises. Because what's happening is, my voice is not being accepted. I don't know that. And I'm not speaking for anybody but myself, but I really would like something done about your current county recorder. Because I've read a lot of things about what has transpired and what the state of our political direction is going in. That concerns me. And I'm sure concerns a lot of people besides myself. And I would appreciate a little more attention to this matter before the 2020 election. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much for coming down here and for your time. Next is Tracy Ireland.
Good morning. Thank you all. I don't know all your names, but I've heard your names here and there and everywhere. I'm a little bit nervous here, but I feel necessary to come down and speak my voice in a situation regarding the elections results that we had in 2018. I worked the polls. I saw things that were not correct. I didn't have people necessarily listen to me, because it was partisan at some of the places. I felt that a lot of other people didn't have their voices heard. And when they did have them heard, action was not taken. We don't have accountability or consequences to things that go wrong. So we ended up with what I consider a pretty good idea of a fraudulent election result. I'm speaking as a citizen, but I also have friends that are in Cottonwood, Cornville, Sedona, Prescott, Sun Lakes, Mesa, Tempe, trying to get everybody where everybody's at, Anthem, all over, that we get together and we discuss the issues. And we are very concerned, so I'm down here for them as well, because they couldn't all make it. I'm very concerned that we are not doing enough with our current Maricopa County Recorder. I'm very concerned at some of the things that I saw. And I'm concerned that I'm not seeing any action. Now, I don't know what goes on, you know, from here in your meetings. I'm not saying you're not talking about it. But we really need to hear from you, because you are the Board and you have the say in this. And what I am requesting today is a new memorandum. Give me a minute here. I'm requesting a new memorandum, understanding taking back election day operations under the control of the Board. So I'm asking you to please consider that, because you do have the control here to do something. And if you do absolutely nothing, you're still going to be, people are going to be upset if we have more problems in 2020. And 2020 is important. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next is Nancy Ordowski.
Thanks for joining us.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I've been here before. You've seen me before. I thank you for the good works that you've done and the way that you're financially taking care of our county. I believe it was in 1955 when an MOU was issued to the county recorder. In 1955, downtown Scottsdale was five blocks and wooden streets. That's a long time ago. And this state and this county has changed tremendously. And this MOU needs to be revisited. I have with me 27 precinct committeemen request to speak forums. They couldn't be here because of job commitments today, but they are all in support of the things that I'm speaking to and the things that all of these other people here in the room are talking to. These are precinct committeemen, PCs, who are grassroots workers, who reach 1,000 or more voters in all of your districts. These are from all over the county, not just one particular district. These are the people, that's 27,000 voters that they're speaking to. And they need to know that these elections are run with integrity and honesty. We are respectfully asking that the Board revisit this MOU and that you return all the legal election choices and decisions that can be made to the Board of Supervisors. We want honest elections, allowing all legally registered citizens to be able to vote and to know that their vote has been counted. I had 80 volunteers working in the polls, and I visited over 36 precincts. And I saw irregularities all over the place and turned in over 30 reports of the things that were happening. Please, this is a very, very important issue that has to be addressed before the 2020 election. And thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time today. Next is Mary Lynn Schreuer. I probably mispronounced that.
It's Mary Lynn Schreuer. Good morning. I am a PC actually in Sun City and retired PA RN. And I understand that the Board of Supervisors are considering taking away the running of the elections from Adrian Fontes. He was duly elected by the citizens, so it would be undemocratic to stop him from doing his job. Additionally, I think he's doing a fantastic job. Therefore, I strongly oppose this action and support his remaining in his position as county recorder. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down today. Next is Darrell J. Covert. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, my name's Darrell J. Covert. I'm a native here in Maricopa County. My family's been here since 1932. Very rarely do I have an opportunity to come down and talk to you about the situation. Having been involved in politics, I'm also the member-at-large for CD Congressional District 5. My biggest concern is in the way the provisional ballots and the emergency locations were put on. Unfortunately, we have a county recorder who is involved in bias and has given notification to a different party instead of showing a sense of fairness. This is really, really important for our upcoming election. And my concern is that through audit, they discovered that the cinema campaign was notified a good week in advance of where these places were. And using a loophole of no IDs, managed to have people who vote that we're not sure of. Talk about disenfranchising a person's vote. I've been here all my life, and it burns me up and makes me angry when I have it. We elect you folks and appoint your supervisors to make hard, hard decisions. And unfortunately, good decisions are generally not easy ones. So we lean upon you to make the right decision. You have the time to seize the moment right here to bring this out to a nonpolitical situation where you have a Board and be able to make a decision that's on it. Throughout the history of Maricopa County, it's never been a situation where all the Board members were one particular party. I am asking for you to look at this in a sense of fairness and be able to get this taken care of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming down. And the last speaker slipped that I have here is for Ed Buford.
Hi, Steve. I know every time, right? Oh, it's Buford. Oh, good, you haven't started it yet. That's great, though, because I always look forward to seeing whether they're going to say Buford or Buford the first time. So, ready, go. Whoops. Bill Gates, I went to a meeting you had way out there in, far from Tempe, with Mary Martin, and I really appreciate you doing that. And Denny Barney's come to my Kiwanis meetings, and I love what Mary Martinez is doing. And Steve, I love you too. But I would like to see this, a lot of things, like the 68,000 people who sent in their license fees without proof of shots, get their license so they would have some kind of ID. But I'm going to jump down because of the time, of course, that there's one thing for which I've tried to go through all the proper authorities at the shelter level, and though I am told they agree with my proposal, it's still, we're still just not doing that. And that is enforce the one law that already exists, which says dogs have to have a license. There's only 41% of the people approximately that have a dog that have a license. I personally went to Downey, California, recommended by Mary, on my own dime, of course, to see how they enforce this. And you know what? It's not unenforceable. It is not costly, especially when I volunteered to create a volunteer task force. But I'm sure there's a lot of reasons that that would have to be gone through all the proper channels. The previous shelter director said it's not cost-effective, that they once tried it, and it's not true. Statistically, for every 12 unlicensed dogs, one ends up at the shelter, and the shelter says that it costs $351 for each dog. So if I was out there, or some group was out there getting 12 more dogs licensed for $17 or $18 a dog and saving the shelter $351, that's $500 combined, with a plus in front of it, for every 12 dogs. I hope I can discuss this with somebody at the Board of Supervisors level. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your testimony, and I'm sure we can follow up on that request. Manager Rich. All right. Now is the time when all of us up here have the opportunity to make any announcements that we would like, and I would like to start with Supervisor Chukri.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for letting me vote telephonically today. And I'm sorry for the Tom Ants award and also the weight that you had prior to me signing on. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joy Rich.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind everybody that tomorrow's our annual wellness walk. We're going to kick off about, registration will start at 6:30, program will start at 7:00, and we're going to start walking at 7:15. So we have over 1,600 city and county employees registered. It's about a two-mile walk. We'll be walking from here to the ballpark and around the concourse at Chase Field and back. So we look forward to anybody who can come join us tomorrow. It should be a great event.
Well, that's great, and we've got great weather right now for the time, for this time of the year, very lucky. So great, great planning in advance there. Supervisor Sellers.
I plan to be there. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple things. I also plan on being here, I think, at 6:30. I think I get up that early. But that's all right. I'll be here, 6:30. But no, also wanted just a quick thanks to Supervisor Hickman and Joy and others that came out to our farm breakfast. It's always a great event. We had ours last week sometime, and it's always good. You know, you bring the community together, you bring in those from the agricultural community, and you start talking about farm issues. I had a whole discussion on the issue of water, which is very critical and important here in the state of Arizona. So it's always a good time. So I want to thank everyone, the farm brewer, for helping organize. They're always fun to have in our district, so that was a good thing. Also, just want to wish everyone Happy Mother's Day. It's a, so all the mothers out there, have your day, relax. Clint's going to cook for everyone and spoil everyone. And I think that's it. We're getting ready for the summer. My base... My baseball team is in second place.
All right.
And so we're all excited. But we're ready for the summer. Let's get this heat going and having fun. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Supervisor Hickman.
Oh, I just, I'm just going to echo Steve's comments. It was awfully nice to be invited to your Farm City Breakfast. Mostly, it was at the Dan Sizemore Dairy. And the city kid finally found out that milk actually comes from a cow and not the store. So that's, that was a great thing. And number two, same thing. Happy Mother's Day. We have an expectant mother in our midst shortly, and one in my office that just had her second child. So congratulations on this Mother's Day to both of them and to all mothers. They are a significant portion and a very important portion of the county. So I think that's a fantastic day to celebrate them. So I know that I'll be doing my best for the mother I have at home to cook breakfast. I don't know about the rest of you. You can eat Hickman eggs if you want. I'll be there with you. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you very much. Happy Mother's Day as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if I do not, if there's some chance my mom watches this today or sees this, and I don't wish her Happy Mother's Day. And of all people, Steve Gallardo started us off on this kick, and then Clint. So on behalf of all five county Board of Supervisors, I want to make it perfectly clear, we love and appreciate our mothers and Happy Mother's Day to all mothers of Maricopa County. So I apologize, Mr. Chairman, to interrupt you, but I felt I had to say that for self-preservation purposes.
Absolutely. Completely understood and very well said, and I would echo that. Happy Mother's Day to my mom, who is one of Supervisor Hickman's constituents.
Valuable constituent.
Thank you. And also, reference was made to someone in my office who will be a mother soon as well. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers of Maricopa County. Just wanted to say thank you to a couple groups. One, we had a wash cleaning of a wash, actually flood control district property in Sunny Slope this morning. Our friends at Crown Castle organized this. They had over 100 employees out there. And again, I could not believe Zach was out there with me. How nice it was. It was, you know, overcast and wonderful, and they're cleaning up that area, area of concern in the Sunny Slope community. City of Phoenix partners on that as well. We are going to have our preliminary budget vote is coming up on May 20th. As I've mentioned at prior meetings, and my colleagues have mentioned at prior meetings, we have a lot of requests from throughout the county, but we have limited resources. So we're looking at all those very closely and would invite everyone who cares about fiscal responsibility, which I know is everyone here today, to join us for that, for that important meeting. And finally, the next day, on May 21st, I will be out in New River Desert Hills for our monthly conversation out there, when we go out and meet with our friends from Anthem, Desert Hills and New River, and always appreciate learning about what's going on out in their community and also the support we receive from county staff who come out to answer questions. So with that, I thank you all for coming today and joining us for this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and this meeting is adjourned.